Good evening, everyone. Love to see a packed room. Welcome. Welcome to the Agora Hills City Council Meeting of Wednesday, November 9, 2022. Consistent with the Governor's orders, this meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers and also by utilizing video conferencing. All attendees in the council chambers will be required to follow current state and county public health guidelines as posted on the doors. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices, and do not access Zoom during the live meeting as it will cause interference with our audiovisual system in the council chambers. Tonight's meeting is also being conducted utilizing video conferencing and electronic means consistent with Assembly Bill 361, and may be viewed on Zoom via the link on the agenda, by livestream on YouTube by entering "Agora Hills City Council Meeting" in your browser and clicking on the link for November 9, 2022. Or you can view the live or archived meeting on the city's website at agorahillscity.org and click on the "Watch Meetings Online" button. With that, I will defer first to our city clerk.
There will be an opportunity for the public to speak on any item listed on the agenda. Any person in the council chambers who wishes to speak or submit a written comment is requested to complete a public comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. Comments submitted at the meeting will be provided to the city council for review and filed with the official record. For any person participating remotely, written public comments were requested to be emailed by 4:00 p.m. today and distributed to the city council in advance of the meeting. To request a speak during public comment, please click on the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar. Request to speak must be received prior to the mayor closing the public comment portion of the item. Public testimony for all speakers is limited to three minutes per speaker. Written public comments will not be read aloud by the city clerk. For full details, please refer to the Public Participation section on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I will call this meeting to order. And very happy to welcome Cub Scout PAC 227 to lead us in the flag salute.
Attention. Will the audience please rise? Color God advance. And salute. Those not in uniform, please put your right hand over your heart. Please say with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Two. Color God dismiss... Wait. Color God, post the colors. Color God dismissed. The audience may be seated.
Thank you, Cub Scout 227. And before you go, I want to give a special recognition to our caller, Ian Raskin, who is celebrating his birthday today. So happy birthday, Ian. Thank you so much for the service on your birthday. All right, with that, we will go to a roll call.
Good evening. Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Here.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Here.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anstead.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Lopez, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We did not hold closed session tonight, so there is no report. And so we'll move on to our approval of the agenda. And just want to announce that an amended agenda was distributed to reflect the 49th program year for item number nine as July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. So with that amendment, will the maker of the motion to approve the agenda, please state your name, as well as our second.
Councilmember Buckley Weber moves to approve tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Weber, a second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, and I'll defer to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Anstead.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We are going to move right away into our presentations. So give me one moment, I'm going to relocate.
Nearly 30 years ago, when the city of Agora Hills was just 11 years old, Dennis Weber was elected to city council. Although it was never Dennis's lifelong goal to be on the city council, he loved Agora Hills and wanted to make a difference in bettering the lives of his family, friends, and the overall community. During his nearly 30-year tenure on the city council, he's been the mayor an unprecedented seven times and has been instrumental in setting sound policies that have helped the city flourish into the amazing and desirable place it is today.
Well, Dennis, saying goodbye after 30 years, I figured there'd be nowhere more fitting to say goodbye than from this dais where you've spent probably hours upon hours making decisions on some really tough issues that really have shaped our community. And I do want to thank you for all of the time and the effort and passion that you've had. I also want to thank you on behalf of our staff for really being someone that cared about our well-being and how our families were doing. And it's that personal touch, it just makes Agora Hills such a great place. I do want to put one thing in perspective, though. 30 years is a long time. So 30 years ago, Indiana Jones and the Last Crusade, probably one of your favorite movies, was just coming out, along with Seinfeld that was just airing. I'm just saying, 30 years is a long time. But I will never forget all the time that we've shared together and all the great talks that we've had, the good ones, the tough ones. And I'm saying goodbye for now, but I'm also saying see you later. We wish you well and look forward to talking to you soon. Take care, buddy.
On Dennis's 1993 campaign flyer, he listed three characteristics: concerned, responsive, and fair, which have been the foundational principles that he has governed by over the years.
Hey Dennis, AKA Pops, your favorite city manager. I want to take a few seconds to congratulate you on a remarkable career as councilman of Agora Hills. I greatly valued our time together, I want you to know that. And I also have amazing amount of respect on how you get it your way. You always had my back, and I'll never forget that. I miss our time together and hope to see you soon.
Dennis is known for his sincerity, integrity, and his genuine care for people. He has stood by his core beliefs, solidifying his stance as an authentic, trusted representative of Agora Hills.
Hello, everyone. I'm Bill McSweeney. I was the captain, the sheriff's captain, of the Lost Hills Station from '96 to 2000. Dennis was kind of a new councilman at that time. We became really close friends. I think that we had the same idea about public safety. Dennis was always supportive. I came and sat here with a prop. This picture reminds me of Dennis. I think it's someone he kind of emulated. He's a proud public official parading in front of his happy constituents. I think that Dennis probably looked at this picture and decided that's the guy he wanted to be, and he certainly is. After 29 years in Agora Hills, when he's gone, the town won't be the same, and everyone will realize it right away. Dennis, you're the greatest. Never worked with a better guy. Appreciate it.
We were a young family when we moved to Agora Hills in 1987. And while Dennis was a focused, hard-working professional serving as a vice president for a local banking institution, he never lost sight of what mattered most: his family and friends.
So Dennis, my friend, I know you're retiring from city politics, but don't retire. Keep going. Whatever it is you do in your life, keep going. Don't ever retire. Retirement does not meant for people like you. You have passion, you have drive, you have conviction. Use it in every single day of your life. And stay involved in the city. The city still needs you, needs your voice, needs your... Any ideas that you can have, speak up. I know you will. You don't need me telling you to do that. But stay you. The only advantage that you really have right now of retiring from the city council is that the people that love you the most get to spend more time with you. Your wife Lori and your kids and your granddaughter. Give them some of that time that they have sacrificed over the last three decades. So at the same time, I want to send out my appreciation to your family. I know how many hours your dad and your grandpa and your husband put into the city. It's so greatly appreciated by all of us, and now you have them. Love them, take care of them, as the rest of us all do.
Hey Dennis, it's your favorite lawyer. I realize that's a pretty short list to be at the top of. But I'm here on behalf of Greg Stapanicich, Candace Lee, Amanda Soskin, and myself, the four individuals who've had the honor of being Agora Hills City Attorney, to thank you for your support, for your friendship, for your kindness over the years, for paying attention to the legal advice we gave you most of the time. But also to convey just respect and admiration for the huge part of your life that you've devoted to public service. Agora Hills is better because Dennis Weber served on the Agora Hills City Council. And that's a great thing to be remembered for. And I just have to say out loud the question that everybody's thinking. Are you crying yet? Congratulations, my friend.
Dennis's legacy is forever embedded into the fabric of our community. He has worn many hats over the past 29 years, but he has never wavered on the hat that he enjoys wearing most, which has been father to our children and dear husband to me.
My favorite memory of my father would probably be riding horses in Cheshrow Park. We'd... When I was a kid, we'd ride for hours and hours and talk about everything. And that's probably one of my favorite memories of my dad, but also just my childhood. I'd like to wish my dad some relaxation, some taking some time off. I think it's going to be a little different that he doesn't have, you know, city council duties. And, I mean, I don't really know my dad without him being on the city council since he was elected when I was, you know, almost two. I'd like to spend time with my father probably the way I always spend the time with him. You know, we sit, talk, have a beer, good conversation, maybe do a little bit more riding in the future.
Hi Dad, I'm proud of you for your 30 years in city council. Miss texting you during the long hours of city council and having been the first thing you see when you're helping come. Love you.
Hi Dennis, you've always been the foundation and rock of our family. Our kids, Christopher, Aaron, granddaughter Olivia, have only known you as a city councilman, a dad, and a grandpa. You faithfully serve the community that you love with no doubts about anything you have wanted or wished to do for the city to make it a better place. But now we are thoroughly excited to have you back as just dad, grandpa, and husband. All our love. We love you forever.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to ask Dennis to please come join me. No. If you think that that's... Let me put it this way, Dennis. I got this over here. We got one over here for you. This is just beginning. Yeah. Come on down, Dennis. Wow, they're all over, so don't worry. There's one here. Come on down. Do it. Thank you. That was a lovely presentation put together with comments from our staff and some of our community members. I just want to give you a real quick summary. There's no way we could fit everything on one page, but I'll do my best to try. So Dennis and his wife Lori moved from Van Nuys to Agora Hills in 1987. He's been married to Lori for 37 years and has four children, three adult daughters and a son, and one granddaughter. Dennis was first elected to the Agora Hills City Council in November of 1993. He is in his seventh term on the city council, having been reelected in November of 2018, and is the only council member to have been elected seven times and also named mayor seven times. So here are a few highlights of what he's done for the city during his almost 30 years on the city council: construction of the original Agora Hills Recreation Center on Thousand Oaks Boulevard in partnership with St. Paul Lutheran Church; the Old Agora Equestrian Park grand opening; the first televised city council meeting in 1997; creation of the Art in Public Places Program; construction of the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center; creation of the city logo; grand opening of the new City Hall Civic Center in 2001 and its 10-year celebration in 2011; restoration of the historic Reyes Adobe Historical Site and grand opening in 2004; launch of the first Reyes Adobe Days, which is now annual, as you know; opening of fire station number 89; the city of Agora Hills 25th and 40th Anniversary celebrations; the formation of the Cultural Arts Council; the land secure for the Recreation and Events Center and grand opening in 2015; the roadside drive bridge widening project and interchange improvements to Canaan Road, Reyes Adobe Road, and Palo Comato Canyon Road. Dennis also contributed to the expansion of the trail system and is a longtime supporter of local Agora Hills businesses and buying local. Dennis served on the Morrison Ranch Homeowners Association Board of Directors, was the commanding officer of the Naval Sea Cadets for five years, and was in the Army California National Guard as a Staff Sergeant for six years. He was named the 2014 Conejo Valley Man of the Year by the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, as well as being named the 2017 recipient of the HABAD of the Conejos Leadership and Lamplighter Award. He has served on the Board of Governors for the Greater Conejo Valley Boys and Girls Club for the past 23 years, was Scout Master for Cub Scout PAC 227, and the current PAC 227 is who performed our flag ceremony this evening in his honor, as well as the Assistant Scout Master and Chaplain for Boy Scout Troop 775, and his son is an Eagle Scout. Dennis currently is Senior Vice President at Pacific Western Bank in their Thousand Oaks Branch. His hobbies are horses, travel, family, and anything cowboy. And now, in appreciation of Councilmember Dennis Weber's dedicated service and contributions to our community, we're going to move on to a few presentations. Don't move. Okay. First, I would like to call up Councilmember Stuart Segal.
They brought the old guys up first. As it should be, by the way. But it's been a pleasure. We've been doing this for a quarter of a century plus, you and I. And I'll be going next month. So the baton is going to be passed to a new generation. And it's been a pleasure being your friend. And on the cog. And a few other good things, too. I brought you this plaque. I'm not going to read it. It's... Your mayor has said everything over and over, and I'm sure you're going to hear it again and again. But we love you, and we appreciate everything you've done.
Okay, next, from the city of Malibu, Mayor Paul Grisanti.
It's an honor for me to be able to present this plaque from the city of Malibu to you. And I want to say that you're not the only person who was getting misty as your video was going on. And I got to tell you that it's very intimidating to see someone who's made this kind of an impression on your city and know that I'm never going to be anywhere close to that. Thank you so much.
Can give that to Kimberly. Okay, next, from the Los Virginas Unified School District, Angela Cutbill and Leslie Stein.
I'm going to cry. Okay. So Dennis. Dennis has been a friend and a mentor to Los Virginas, to our superintendent, Dan Stepanowski, who I know you had a long talk with the other day. He's out of town, he could not be here tonight. He's been a true supporter. We will meet occasionally, we will have a beer, we will talk about what's going on with schools. And Dennis's answer and information and what he says to us 100% of the time is yes, and what can I do to support you? And Dennis, that is, you are a true friend. You lead with your heart the most, and your care for the people of Agora Hills. I do have a personal Dennis story I want to share. So my husband and I and our two kids moved here in 1996. We moved from... All the way from Canoga Park. And my husband said, "I want to move out to Agora. The schools are great." We had kids in private school at the time. And I said, "Where?" You know, it was so far away. I said, "You're..." I literally said to him, "You're making me move to Mars." So I went kicking and screaming to this quiet sleepy town, and Evening Shade was on television at the time. And I said, "The sidewalks roll up, you know, at 8 o'clock at night here." And we settled in, and then there was a knock on the door. And I answered the door, and it's Dennis Weber. And he says, "Hi, I'm the mayor. How are you?" I said, "The mayor?" So I said, "Bruce, the mayor is here at our door." And after that, after we had a talk and met the mayor, I shut the door and I looked at Bruce, my husband, and I said, "We're home. We've come home." Dennis, you are a man of the people, and you made us feel at home from day one, so thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. We have a proclamation for you. And we don't just appreciate you for all your support of the schools. Like Leslie, I'm also a resident of Agora Hills, and we thank you for your dedication and time to the city. It's been wonderful getting to know you. And the things I knew about Dennis the first five minutes of meeting him are the things I still know now. He loves his family, he loves his city, and he loves his country. And he has served well for a long time, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're not even halfway through, my friend. Okay, next, Los Virginas Municipal Water District, Public Affairs and Communications Manager, Mike McNutt.
All right, first, thanks for having me. And congratulations on your retirement. So this proclamation is from all of us at Los Virginas Municipal Water District, all the staff and Board of Directors. I'm just going to read this. Whereas Dennis Weber has served as a member of the City of Agora Hills Council from 1993 to present, and there's a bunch of numbers of the amount of years you served as mayor. Whereas during his tenure, the city council and the city of Agora Hills successfully protected Agora Hills as a thriving location and for a wide range of successful businesses. Dennis has been an excellent representative for the city of Agora Hills, providing a steady and reliable level of leadership that reflects the values, the residents he serves. Dennis has also continuously assisted in the conservation and environmental stewardship efforts of Los Virginas Municipal Water District. And at all times, Dennis, you have exhibited a positive attitude and enduring commitment to honesty, integrity, and the highest standards of public service. So let it be known today and to everybody that this ninth day of November, that the Department of Directors of Los Virginas Municipal Water District and its staff honors you for your excellence and dedication exhibited by you during your years of public service and extends our best wishes upon your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to call up an organization I know is very near and dear to Councilmember Weber's heart, the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, President and CEO Danielle Borja.
Thank you. Dennis has had a long history with the business community here in Agora Hills, as well as with our chamber. In 2010, when we were currently the Thousand Oaks West Lake Chamber of Commerce, we had the opportunity, and we're grateful enough, to add the city of Agora Hills and rebrand our organization as it currently is today, as the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. And you were such an advocate for us to be part of the city of Agora Hills and greatly appreciate your partnership. And then we extended that even further when we formed the Tourism District in 2013 and had the opportunity to work to increase hotel stays in Agora Hills and serve as the lead agency. You also mentioned the Man of the Year Award. You were crying then, too. I remember it. I planned that one for you. And so, you know, I'm just so glad that I had the short time to work with you in this role. And I know that you worked very closely with Jill Lutter and had a very special relationship with her. And so on behalf of our board, I just thank you for your service. And I know you're not going to be a stranger. And I don't have any plaques or awards tonight because I think we've given you enough over the years. So we're just going to treat you to a really nice dinner and give you some rest that you deserve.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, next up, the tears are... It's this building, you get this, right? Okay, next up, Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. I would like to call up Captain Jennifer C-2 and retired Chief Bill McSweeney. Lieutenant Foster, you coming up, too? Come on. All right. Go on over there.
So Dennis, we've known each other for many years. And actually, prior to me actually working at the station, we were family friends and met you through my husband and Boys and Girls Club. And then it seems like every time I would take out my family, I'd run into you if it wasn't Wood Ranch, it was Maria's or the club. And it's just really fun to be able to run around the city, seeing the mayor, seeing the city council member, and just all your support over the years. So on behalf of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, Malibu Lost Hills Station, we had this made for you by one of our employees. So just thank you for always supporting law enforcement. I mean, literally, all the time, Dennis. You've always supported us, and we truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Jen. I'm Bill McSweeney, and from 1996 to 2000, I was the captain at the Lost Hills Station. Dennis was kind of a rookie councilman at the time. We were both very young men then, and we're not anymore. But we had a great friendship right from the beginning. I needed a lot of advice about what the city was about and what was needed. At that time, Fran Pavly was still around. And Fran and Dennis both gave me a lot of advice. Quite different advice, but they gave me a lot of advice. And anyway, as a result of all that and a lot of war stories, Dennis and I became very good personal friends. I buy him dinner about once a month, and he seems to appreciate that, so... I'll continue. It doesn't... Not because you're a councilman or the mayor. So anyway, I'm very happy to be here, happy and proud to have a friend like Dennis. And I think, other than perhaps my wife, who is a council member, he's the next best thing. thing. I have something that I'd like to say, appreciation of everyone in the United States Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Relief Foundation is an organization that virtually every deputy is a member of, and they don't often come to city halls and make presentations to city council people and mayor. But in this case, it's a big exception. This is for Dennis, the act was asking for something that would get him to take it. And I don't think it was a bit of a wall. By the way, councilman Dennis Weber, you've ever asked me three times, there's really no one to answer. City of Agoura Hills, 1993 to 2022, seven times mayor, no better friend in law enforcement, a genuine.
Thank you so much. All right, and we're wrapping up our in-person community speeches. No, 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 we're not done. We're just, we're done with this portion of the program by welcoming up your friend, Rabbi Mois Chabriski from the Chabad of the Canejo. Of course.
Hi, Dennis. People see us all the time together, and they often ask, what's this banking executive, Catholic cowboy doing with this Hasidic rabbi who has the ZZ Top beard? Who has never ridden a horse up until a month ago? So I want to share how this began, this friendship, this, literally like brothers. It was December of 1993. We have had an annual Hanukkah festival at the Agoura Hills City Mall. And each year, I would call City Hall and ask them to send a member of the council to help us in the festivities. Well, Dennis Weber was just elected a few weeks earlier, and they sent him. He comes up to the stage, introduces himself, I'm Mayor, Councilmember-elect Dennis Weber. I'm here on behalf of the city of Agoura. And I said, great, I'm going to call you up in a minute to say a few words, and then we're going to go into the cage. And he stares at me, cage? I said, yeah, we're going to go from here into the cage. And he says, what type of festival is this? And I show him that behind us is this big Edison truck that has this cherry picking cage. It's about three and a half feet by three and a half feet. And I tell him that both of us are going to go into that, and we're going to go up 25 feet to kindle the menorah together. And he's looking at the cage, and he's looking at me. Now, mind you, the two of us were a little skinnier back then, because we didn't start our monthly pizza lunch. But it was a challenge getting both of us into this cage. And the guy starts sending us up 25 feet in the air, and he's like, looking at me, he's like, are we, are we going to live? After we kindled the menorah, the band started striking up some music, and I started clapping, and the cage was going up and down. And then the guy from Edison decided to have some fun with us, and he took us for a ride way, way, way up. I mean, now, I'm height scared, I don't know about you. You know, so the two of us were making believe that we were having the time of our lives, waving to everyone, both of us wondering if we would ever survive. That's where this friendship began, somewhere way above Agoura Hills. And the two of us have really bonded. Dennis is a man of God, he's a man of country, he's a man of family, he's a man of community. I don't know what you say to someone that has given 30 years of his life to us, to our families, to our city. He's given of himself time and time and time again. And it's not just the time on the council day, it's not just the time that you're here, it's with the people, it's going out, meeting the people, talking to the people, visiting store to store, house to house, as we heard some of the speakers here tonight. That's 30 years of what this man has given to us. So the word "thank you" is cheap when it comes to saying our gratitude toward someone like you. I'd like to make a presentation of something that I thought would be most fitting for you to remember us. I don't have to use the word "remember," because we're still having pizza this week. It's a menorah, Dennis. And the menorah represents light, and you have brought light to our city. Thank you so much.
It's beautiful. Thank you, Rabbi. All right? Almost, we're almost done. We're almost done. So in addition, I would like to present the following on behalf of representatives that were unable to attend the meeting this evening. First is a certificate from Congressmember Ted Lieu. So we'll give that, there you go. Next is a certificate from our state Senator Henry Stern. Okay, next is a plaque from the city of Westlake Village. Nice. Says seven terms as mayor, it's a lovely plaque. And then coming will be a plaque from the city of Calabasas, a plaque from the city of Thousand Oaks, and a scroll from the Los Angeles County Fire Department. All of this will be delivered to you at a later date. So you need to build a room to your house with all of this. So on behalf of the city council and staff, we wish you the very best on your retirement, and we would like to present these gifts as a token of our appreciation for your 29 years of distinguished service to the city of Agoura Hills. So first, there is a framed photograph of City Hall. Just I'll show everyone. Lovely picture. You helped build that. That's right. So that's one gift. Our next gift is, give me one second, let me, I'm going to need two hands for this one. It is a traditional gift basket with a few of your favorite things. There are some good treats in there, including some Glenlivid. Looks like a little Yeah, a little remembrance book. And then finally, we have, as a nod to what you love and all things equestrian, we have this statue that is representative of the Pony Express. Hold it by the bottom. Okay, we'll leave that there. Isn't that beautiful? Okay, so before we hear remarks from Dennis, because now after all that, we are going to make you speak. So we'll give you a couple moments to recover, and we're going to, why don't you have a seat, and we're going to see if our fellow council members have anything additional to add.
Well, I'll go first. Of course we have something to say. Everybody knows how caring and loving that Dennis is, and no matter where you go in this city, even if they don't agree with Dennis' viewpoint on something, they still say, he's such a nice guy, and they love Dennis. And I think that we all really feel that way. He always remembers all of the staff and all of the council members' birthdays, and when anything happens in our lives, whether it's good or bad, he's the first one to send an email to congratulate us or to share condolences. He's very respectful, and what Dennis has taught me, and we always are on completely opposite sides of the dais, because both city managers probably thought that we were going to kill each other at some point. But what I've really learned from serving with Dennis is that it doesn't have to be that way. We get along great, we respect each other, we listen to each other, and then we vote the different way. But I wish that more people had that opportunity and had been taught that, because it's really made a much better experience being on this dais, getting along with Dennis, and sharing a joke with him, or a glass of wine, or whatever. A couple of personal stories is that when we moved here in 1992, I guess it was shortly after that Dennis was running for city council for the first time. I had two really young kids, my husband and I were young, too. And we saw a Weber for City Council sign, so we borrowed it from a neighbor, and we had our holiday card taken with a picture of me. And I remember in the note that I said, can you ever imagine that I would even think of running for city council? And then 20, 30 years later, here I am, serving with Dennis. Another great story that I want to share with all of you is that the way the subcommittees work, and Dennis and I have been on the Public Works Subcommittee for years together, and the staff brings us a project, we talk about it, and we always end up coming, you know, we ask a lot of questions, we work things, would you like it like this, would you accept it this way? And believe it or not, we always agreed, except for one time. We agreed on $80 million wildlife crossing, $65 million bridge. I mean, really big projects. And the only time that I can ever recall that the staff had to put in the staff report that Dennis and I did not agree, and to leave it up to the rest of the council, was the color of our new benches. We could not agree. The choices were green, we must have driven the staff crazy. Kelly Fisher was nice enough to actually bring in samples to it, and it was just one of those things. And so they had to come to the full council on the color of the benches, green or rest. And as you've probably noticed around town, they're red. So we've gotten through a lot of big projects and some little tiny ones, too. So Dennis, thank you for all of your years of service. It's quite impressive. I, you know, I can't even actually imagine, you know, spending 25 years on the council and growing up here and doing all that you've done for our city. You've heard all these different lists, and I could probably sit here and tell you about 30 more things that I know that Dennis has been instrumental on and has worked on from the beginning. But he knows all of them, we know all of them, and so thank you, Dennis, from the bottom of my heart.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Well, mine is going to be brief, because I've just arrived. But Dennis was the first council member to reach out to me and took me out for breakfast. And we spent the whole time talking about our families, which was wonderful. And I think, as everybody has shown tonight, family has always been first for you, and I feel that we're all part of that family. So thank you for taking care of us for such a long time. And then one last thing I'd like to add, I didn't know you were an Indiana Jones fan. My husband is currently working on the fifth episode, on the fifth version, it's coming up next summer, so we'll have to take you to see it. Thank you, Dennis.
Mayor Portemans, did you want to share a few words?
What I want to share about Dennis is, I think what Councilmember Buckley Weber shared is that one of the things that I enjoy about the city council is actually when I have subcommittees with Dennis and working with him. And again, Dennis and I sometimes don't share the same political philosophies, but I think that we figured out a way that where we overlap, and then we actually became friends. And actually, I've run against Dennis once or twice, and so I know I've given him grief throughout the years. And, but I think what I learned from Dennis and what I've taken away over the last four years is you can be totally on two different sides, but you can treat each other with dignity and respect and still be friends, even if you have different political philosophies. And I think that's something actually that this country can learn as a whole, that we need to try to bridge the gap and bring our political philosophies together. And Dennis has done that time and again. I've noticed he's done it with many people on this council, and that's something that I really respect from him, that he's been able to do that. And I'm going to try to continue that legacy as long as I serve on the council, which will be nowhere close to the 29 years that you've served, Dennis. But that's what I've taken from Dennis personally. And also, that you can't, after getting to know Dennis, you can't come away not loving his enthusiasm for his family, for his city, for his country. And he's all about service. And that's something that you can't learn. It's something I think that is innate in Dennis over his life, and he just loves helping people, helping others. And again, that's something, Dennis, I'm always going to emulate going forward. And I'm really happy that I got to serve four years with you on the city council and learn from you, and I hope to take that away going forward. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. And you've heard a lot from me already, and I, you know, don't want to repeat too much of what my fellow colleagues have said. I'm also one of those that tends to disagree with a lot of Dennis' political philosophies. But, you know, as my other council member said, we are able to do that respectfully up here on the dais, and we could certainly use a lot more of that in our national political sphere as well. So I think we're really a model up here of how to discuss things. And actually, despite our differences, accomplished quite a bit, we've accomplished quite a bit together. Personally, I've served on the Finance Committee with Dennis. We currently serve on the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center during its time of crisis, so it's been important to get that really through and up and running. And I think my favorite committee to serve on with Dennis was election reform. We updated our election reform campaign laws, and it was, it was like black and white, you know, I had all the social media comments, and he was looking at me like I was crazy, and it was, Kimberly can tell you, it was fun to be in that room, it was some good-spirited conversation. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Dennis to see if you have a few words to share with us.
I'd like to move to adjourn this meeting.
Denied, denied.
There's no second? Well, you know, honestly, this is, a lot of it's truly unexpected, so many of these wonderful gifts and the recognition, people that have been around for so long. But I'll go as quickly as I can. As I told Chris, it's only maybe be 45 minutes to an hour, and we'll be done. But you might know that I was born on Christmas Day in a snowstorm in New York City. When I was a little guy, and this will shock Debbie, when I was a little guy, we had no car. car, no TV, and no phone, no social media at all. My dad took a bus to work, my mom took a train that was right behind our house, she worked in the telephone operator in New York City at night. My grandma and my aunts lived right next door and they had a phone, so that's how we communicated if we had to. But finally, they got a television. So my brothers and I, we were little guys, we'd go over to see my grandma and my aunts and watch TV. And it was mainly cowboy shows. And as the song goes, "All my heroes were cowboys." And I wanted to be one of them. I wanted to be one of the guys with the white hat, riding a horse, chasing bad guys. And so then my dad got a job in Arizona and he was gone for several months to find a house for us. And while he was gone, he sent me a postcard that I still have. "Oh, boy, I'm so sorry." This picture of a horse on a postcard and he said, "Dennis, one day we'll have one of these." Well, we finally got to Arizona. We had a house, we had a car, we had a phone, and we had a TV. And a few months later, we had a horse. All my dreams had come true. So you fast forward to Agoura Hills and I have a house, I have two cars, multiple phones, multiple TVs, and I still have a horse. And you saw my horse pistol in the video. So life really doesn't change much for me. A funny story I have to tell you that, you know, I'm a banker and I was, there was a group of bank managers had a bank meeting and they had this HR lady, I called her a shrink, and she was all in this room with all of us and she wanted to know, each one of us, what would the perfect job be if we weren't a bank manager? So we all filled out cards and we're supposed to put our names on the cards. So she collected them, shuffled them around, and then she was going to read each one out loud and then the colleagues were supposed to guess who was the manager. So she happened to pull my card first, I'll never forget this day, and she read the description. Everybody in the room yelled, "That's Dennis." And it simply said, "To be a park ranger in Yellowstone, on horseback with a gun, getting bad guys." It's a true story, true story. I'm consistent and if nothing else, as you know. I still watch cowboy shows, Gunsmoke, Rawhide, anything John Wayne. But I also now watch Blue Bloods, Cops, Jail, and Live Nation on Patrol. You know, there's so many memories, especially flooded back here to me today, too many to count, but that I've been part of, a voter on. I remember my first vote was on the sound wall on the 101 freeway, trying to protect the residents in Lake Linderoe from the freeway noise. And we had the car wash on Canaan, I mean Race Doby and Canwood, followed up with Lavagio across the street, and the Ridge Development that took forever to get approved, and the Trader Joe Center. And then I remember the wonderful donation from the Hilton Foundation, from Steve Hilton, gave us enough money to move forward with the events center. Well, we used to be grateful to Steve Hilton and the John Otter. The two bridges I lobbied for over these years, you know, the one at the Equestrian Center and then the roadside bridge. And I remember, a month after I was sworn in, the Northridge earthquake hit on January 17th, 1994. During my first term as mayor, we had prayer before the council. On my term, I remember I spent a whole day with Louis Zamperini from Umbroken. What, I tell you what a truly treasured day that was to spend an entire day with him alone, he and his son. Remember Yul Hauser? Yul Hauser called here at City Hall, wanted to talk to me and I couldn't believe I was really talking to this guy, he's got this very distinct voice, and he wanted to come out and visit the Indian on the hill off of Agoura Road. And I said, "I'll make that happen." He said, "I'll call you back." He never called back. Really mad at him. I wanted to meet him. But I loved taking part, as all of the mayors have, is walking to school with the mayor, the kids, they loved it, they were so excited. And then you read to them in the library on many occasions. And of course, some of my best times and my memories are all my ride-alongs with the heroes of Lost Hills. You know, you don't really think about where you're going to be on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, you know, for the next 29 years. And actually, until it occurs to you, and I'll tell you that, that's nearly 700 days. Think about that, 700 days that you'll never get back. And that's not counting the hours or the subcommittees that at least referred to. So basically, after 30 years, it's time to bid you all goodbye. I won't miss the council meetings, as a lot of us know. I always thought that the less meetings the government had, the better off we were. And I still feel that way. However, I will miss terribly the men and women on this staff. I'll miss the various committees I served on with all of my fellow council members. These meetings were very good and they gave me a view into the real meaning of being a council member. I got to know the staff in a way I could never have imagined, as well as getting to know the other council members who served on those same committees with me. These committees were informative and oftentimes fun. And the people that are listening to this, the staff, they'll understand. Ask Charmaine about the bats. Ask Tremira what I thought about the roundabout. Ask Lise and her pension for knowing Latin names of plants. And I'm just saying, plant the damn things unless going on with this. Karen, who I got to know, I walked with her for miles at a Rite Aid for Life event years ago. Or Kelly, when he sees my name pop up on his phone, he knows exactly why I'm calling. Kristi and I chats about PERS and cash flow. Celeste, who the ones who keeps us honest with all things HR. Kimberly, all she's been through with me and the many financial reports she's helped me with, and of course, my mutual love of Disneyland. And all this time, Kimberly, you thought this place was the happiest place on earth. Amber, who seems to be everywhere and her voice comes out of the clouds during council meetings. And then there's Amy, who was accused of heading the Happy Department where all the fun takes place. I'm going to miss Steve Biglin, as I called him, Stevie Wonder. This young man broadcast and taped every city council meeting and planning commission meeting for over 26 years and never missed one. The little duo, JT and Woody. Now you can say all rise. Each member of Nate's team will always have a special place in my heart. And Nate, who is a special man, has become a friend forever. As you simply can't be doing this job without some sort of affection for all of you. And I'll come visit each of you before I officially leave. And now I think about the folks that have either retired, like sweet and efficient Pat Wiley, or those that have passed away and left good memories, like Judy, who greeted everyone at the front desk, or Mike Gonzalez, who loved my F-150 and my personalized plates. Every time he saw me coming, when he was in his truck picking up signs, doing something in code enforcement issues, he got out of his truck, stood in the roadway, and saluted me. And great memories. I've served with Terry Matts, Dave Adams, Greg Ramirez, and Nate, each special and unique men. Each of them taught me about patience when dealing with the five wackos, my worries, not theirs, that have somehow they've managed to placate over the last 30 years. I hope everyone I've served with has some good memories or thoughts of their time with me too. Each of you made me smile when I came into City Hall. Each of you took the time to tell me your personal stories over the years, whether it's a birth, a marriage, a divorce, even issues with someone internally. Anything that was told me as I made a promise to Dave Adams was taken to the grave moment. And I've never betrayed your trust or your faith. I'll also promise to try and call all of you on your birthdays. I've missed the many business people I've met and the honesty they shared with me over these years when they call asking for advice or help. I always thought the government should be always helping, but rather, we face so many rules in government for signage and lighting, story polls, stamp mandates, taxes, all the things that make no sense to me. My life as a banker has always been dealing with clients, both business and non-business, listening to them tell me about their needs or issues. It was never whether they had a lot of money or a little bit. All that mattered is that they felt respected, able to talk to someone, they cared about their problem, tried to offer help when I could. I appreciated their faith in me. And it's the same way I worked at being a councilman or mayor. I wanted to be someone that could be approachable. My theme, as mentioned, was, my first campaign was to make a difference and I hope I have. The residents I've met over the years have created so many stories, many of them very funny ones. I'll share a couple. The stories at the doorstep are them pleading for help in some way. When I was walking and knocking on doors during the election cycle, it was grueling as anyone done it would know. When the voters have you on their porch, there's nobody around, they're going to lay it out on you, they're going to dump on you. I thought I did a good job, even though we didn't always agree on the issues. But I'll tell you, in all these seven election cycles, I'll bet you I can count on one hand the number of people that were angry with me over these times. Several years ago, when I was a mayor, I was running for reelection. And this one sweet little lady opened the door and listened to my request to vote her vote, and she apologized to me, saying she couldn't vote for me. When I asked her why, she said, "Well, I can't vote for you, I'm going to vote for Mayor Reardon." You can't make these stories up. Another time, I met two ladies at the doorstep and I delivered my pitch and they told me how funny I was. And then they asked me in for dinner. And they would probably vote for me, but they wanted me to know they were both communists. And I said, "I didn't know we had any of those in Agoura Hills. I don't know whether they voted for me or not." During these walks, I've been invited to taste testing of bourbon and join an Oktoberfest party where the mayor would drink the first bit of beer as they do in Germany. I'm coming to the end. I remember sitting over the years in Jess Thomas's home, drinking wine and discussing local politics. We didn't agree on every issue, but it was really enjoyable times with him and his wife. He was also the first person to give me money for my first election. I also recall seeing an article a long time ago about someone named Mary Weisbrock. And she was trying to stop the development of what's now Pollo Camato Canyon. So I called her as I was really worried that I wouldn't be able to ride my horse in Pollo Camato anymore. So after speaking to her, she asked me if I would join SOS, Save Open Space. I said, "Sure." And then she said, "What would you like to be treasurer of Save Open Space?" I said, "Sure." You can't make these things up, like I tell you. And then she put me in touch with a new church that was opening in Oak Park. And 30 years later, we're still part of St. Maximilian Colby. Thank you, Mary. Once upon a time, Larry Brown gave me a meet and greet in his home for one of my reelection bids. I told you, you cannot make this stuff up. I was sworn in on December 7th, 1993, as Rabbi Briskie told you. The first event, as you heard, was I was invited to light a menorah and I agreed to go. I happened to be managing a bank in Beverly Hills and had a car phone. Remember the ones that you had a suitcase in your trunk and the big heavy cord and antenna on the top? So it was at the Agoura Deli Shopping Center. When I left the bank, I called Dennis Prager, who is my favorite talk show host. He took my call. I told him who I was, that I was on my way to light a menorah with a rabbi I had never met and wanted Dennis to know that I admired and respect him. And the fact that he was Jewish made it special, that when I lit the menorah, that I would do it in his honor. And he was so touched, he told me, and then on the air, he told me I could honor him more. By every time I voted on the council, the vote is that I was not running for reelection. Such a simple and powerful statement, and I agree to it. And that one request has changed my life. I lit the menorah, Rabbi Briskie said, "High up in the air." I did not like hate heights, I didn't know you didn't like heights either, so you were good about that, you kept your mouth shut about it. But like he said, we are now truly brothers. Here we go. My son Chris and my daughter Erin can't remember when their dad wasn't on the city council. Chris has walked neighborhoods with me, put out lawn signs, and joined me in waving my signs on election day at Canaan and Canwood, and sweated the results with me. Thanks, buddy. I love you, I'm proud of you. So as I turn off my cellphone on city council meetings, I don't see messages, emails, or texts. When I leave City Hall, I turn them on and invariably, there's a text from my daughter Erin telling me she loves me. When it's a long meeting, which lately there have been many, she adds, "Your late dad, must have been a lot of talkers tonight. Honey, you have no idea. I love you the most." And then there's Lori, 37 years married, and the poor thing has been my treasurer for the past 22 years. And I think next to me, she's the happiest person because she doesn't have to do any more FPPC filings to Kimberly or the state. One of my favorite songs always makes me cry, but as you all know, it doesn't take much to have me cry. Song is by Josh Groban and it's emotional to me as it describes Lori. And please know, I am not going to try and sing it, but I'll share some of the words. This is where it's going to be tough. "You were content to let me shine. Always a step behind. You were the one with all the strength. And did you ever know that you're my hero in everything I want to be? I can fly higher than an eagle, you're the wind beneath my wings. I might appear to go unnoticed, but I have it all here in my heart. I would be nothing without you, you're the wind beneath my wings." I originally listened to a talk by Rabbi Briskie in which he asked a question, "Who will remember us? How have I affected others?" I hope you remember all those who have served this city. And I hope I've affected all of you and the city in a positive way. So in closing, I've often told my son Chris, "It is better that people are happier when you enter the room than when you leave it." I truly hope that's the way he'll remember me, as I've loved being in their room with you, and I will miss you more than you know. So goodbye, God bless you. I keep you in my daily prayers and thanks for the memories we've made together.
And now, in a cruel, cruel... And now, in a cruel, cruel joke, we're gonna make you stay and talk about building codes and CDVG funds. So you're not quite off the hook yet, but we do have to finish today's meeting, and then we have one more reorganization meeting, and then we will, you know, wish you the very happiest of retirements. So with that, you're more than welcome to stay, everyone. But if you're not really up to chatting about our building code update, then you don't have to stay. Is there a way I can do my 40 facts for 40 years during council comments, just so we can get to the meat? Is that something that needs to be voted on, or can I just executively ask to move that? Okay. So we're gonna move the Intergovernmental Special Reports 40 facts and any of the other staffs to the comment section. Let's move to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to the city clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the councils shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. And we respectfully request that if you have something to distribute to the council, you hand it to our city clerk, and do not approach the dais. With that, I'll defer to our city clerk for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted. I will now defer to staff for any remote participants. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There are no hands raised to speak on this item.
Okay. Then with that, we will move to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to the city clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I'll once again defer to our city clerk for any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted. I'll now defer to staff for any remote participants.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city council, or does anyone need to pull anything on the consent calendar? Okay, then I will ask for a motion and a second, and please state your names.
Commissioner Sylvester will make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Mayor Protim Anstead, seconds.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt the following seven consent calendar items. Number one, approve minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 26, 2022. Number two, approve demand warrant register number 882. Number three, approve treasurer's report for September 2022. Number four, approve adoption of amendments to the City of Agoura Hills, California fiscal budget years 2021, 22, and 2022, 23. Number five, approve one agreement for consultant services with Ring Con Consultants for the preparation of California environmental quality analysis, initial study, and appropriate environmental documentation for the Dorothy Place Project. And two, agreement for payment of costs with Wilmington Residential in connection with the preparation of environmental documentation. Number six, approve and make Assembly Bill 361 findings for Special Brown Act requirements for teleconference meeting. And number seven, approve annual compliance reports for the Transportation Impact Fees Fund covering fiscal year 2021, 2022. And I will defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval 5 to 0.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving quickly, because Councilmember Buckley Weber is going to need to leave us early tonight. So our next item is a discussion to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance number 22-465, adopting by reference the 2022 edition of the California Building Standards Code, the 2021 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, amending Articles 3 and 8 of the Agoura Hills Municipal Code, and Resolution number 22-2024, making findings that amendments to the 2022 editions of the California Building Standards Code as adopted by ordinance are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. And with that, I will now defer to our building official, Lucas Squatch, for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, and to you and the honorable council members and members of the public. At the October 12 city council meeting, the council introduced an ordinance adopting the 2022 California Building Standard Code along with local amendments, and set a public hearing date for tonight, November 9, 2022. Tonight, we'll do a quick recap from last meeting and address the questions that were brought up at that time, and we will conclude with a recommendation. So every three years, California adopts a new set of codes to establish uniform construction standards for buildings in the state. The California Building Standards Commission in early 2022 adopted the California Building Standards Code, also known as Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. The 2022 state codes will go into effect January 1, 2023. Local jurisdiction can make amendments to the state codes, provided they are stricter than the state codes, and that they are reasonably necessary due to local, climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. Some of the proposed amendments for the City of Agoura Hills include: The Los Angeles, the administrative amendments is to facilitate administration of the code. The Los Angeles Regional Uniform Code amendments is to address the structural-related provisions of the region, including modified shipping containers. Grading and drainage amendments, which is used to provide guidelines and technical provision to enforce grading requirements. The voluntary seismic retrofit amendments is for upgrading the seismic-resistant capacity of existing deficient buildings. Automatic gas shut-off valve amendment requires the installation of earthquake gas shut-off valves to reduce potential fire and explosion hazard after a seismic event. Also, the requirement for very high fire hazard severity zone construction standard for all structures in Agoura Hills is further reinforced with amendments. And then there's the adoption of the emergency housing appendix, which provides a framework for Agoura Hills to deal with housing needs in an emergency. And lastly, is the adoption of tiny house provision, which provides technical framework for building and safety staff to review tiny houses in accordance with established standards. Now, at last month's city council meeting, the council, by a vote of 5 to 0, introduced the ordinance adopting the reference California state codes along with local amendments. However, the city council also expressed some concern and requested clarifications relating to emergency housing amendments, modified shipping container, and tiny houses. With the emergency housing provision, the city council had reservation about the trigger for when the use of emergency homes would be permitted or allowed. Staff reviewed the specific code section, and with the assistance of the city attorney, added a provision to the trigger to require a specific authorization of the City of Agoura Hills Council prior to being enacted. The city council also requested clarity on whether modified shipping containers and tiny houses are allowed in the city from the land use perspective. Our community development director, Denise Thomas, will speak on this topic.
Thank you, Lucas. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Denise Thomas, I'm the Community Development Director here in the city. There were two questions that were raised relating to modified shipping containers and tiny houses. Three, if you count the what qualifies as a tiny house question, that was raised by Councilmember Buckley Weber. So any dwelling that is under, tiny houses are dwellings that are under 400 square feet, as defined by the building code and by the state. The shipping containers, modified shipping containers and tiny houses are permissible if they are approved by HCD. So essentially, what happens is a manufacturer can go to the state, submit all of their calculations and their designs, and once they do that, HCD can approve those units as dwelling units. Once they are approved by HCD as dwelling units, we must treat them as if they are any other kind of house. We can't make a distinction. Our existing municipal code has provisions for modular houses and manufactured houses, so dwelling units that would be used for the cargo container houses would be subject to those design requirements that are already adopted in our code. They would also have to have a conditional use permit if the unit is older than 10 years. So say it was approved by HCD 12 years ago, it was transferred to someone else, and they want to use it, they would have to get a conditional use permit in order to do that. And at that time, we would make sure that the provisions of the code were met by the proposed development. With respect to tiny houses, we already allow ADUs, and ADUs are under 800 square feet. So you could live in a tiny house right now, we allow for that. If it's your ADU, no one has come in yet and said, "I would like to live in a 400-square-foot house on my property as my primary dwelling, but should that happen, if it's approved by HCD, we would treat it as a house, and we would apply our code." So with that, I have nothing further to add. If you have any additional questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
So at this time, staff respectfully recommends the city council adopt ordinance number 22-465 and Resolution number 22-2024, making express findings that the state code amendments are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, does any council member have questions about the staff presentation? No questions? Okay. We'll move to public comments. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. So I will now open the public hearing, and I will defer to the city clerk to see if we have any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted. I'll now defer to staff for any remote participants. I guess we'll assume there are no participants.
I don't think there are any participants on this. Okay, so there being no speakers before closing the public hearing, no further questions, correct? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. And before we move on to, okay, we've got comments. Okay, so I will call on each council member for deliberation, and I think we should start with Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So thank you to staff for clearing up the questions that I've had at the last hearing. I re-watched the hearing to make sure I didn't forget all my questions, and kind of gave them all to you again. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. So I'm approve of the new language for the emergency housing, requiring the authorization from the city. I think that makes me more comfortable with that whole thing. You know, I think that the questions that I had, which Denise has answered, have to do with land use and zoning more than building code. I mean, I know they do, so now that I really look at that. So maybe it's something we take up next year, but for right now, I can move forward with having the plan and these building code, so they're all in place for, you know, the tiny houses or the modified shipping containers. I was still a little hung up, I have to be honest, with the flagpole, and drove Nate crazy today with that. Well, how big is this flagpole out in City Hall? And what's been explained to me, and which I'm comfortable with, is the 20 feet, because I was thinking that seems awfully high for a residential area. But if you go to 18 feet, these come in kits, and there could really be some safety issues that could arise, that somebody may have to cut two feet off to get the flagpole at their home. And I don't want to create something for two feet that's probably not a good idea in terms of home safety, or the safety to a house, or to somebody walking by. And as Ms. Thomas pointed out to me, you know, if you think about it, two feet from the street's probably not going to be that noticeable. So I'm comfortable moving forward with the 20 feet on the flagpole, and I'm ready to move forward on the whole thing. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I'm ready to move forward. I agree with what my fellow council member said. I'm also really glad that we're including the whole of Agoura Hills in the high fire severity zone, because we are. So that's great to see, and I'm glad that we're including the gas valve shut-offs in new builds and in, you know, excessive remodeling. So that's good. So I'm quite happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also had a discussion with Lucas this week regarding the same things that Councilman Buckley Weber had, and he clarified that for me. And I'm born with this and ready to move forward.
Okay, Mayor Protim?
Yeah, I think the questions on the, I mean, my concern was on the intermodal shipping containers, and I think that Denise answered a lot of those questions, but I think there is some probably land use discussions in the future, but I think I'm comfortable moving forward with her approving the use of those. So I'm ready to move forward. We discussed this mostly before.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow council members, appreciate the conservative approach that we're taking, appreciate the authorization for the emergency use, emergency homes. I also want to clarify that there is no online questions. We got confirmation, making sure that the public has an opportunity to weigh in, and so there was no public comment on that. So with that, I'm also ready to move forward. And so I will call for a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation of adopting ordinance number 22-465 and Resolution number 22-2024.
Councilmember Buckley Weber moves, so moves.
Councilman Weber, seconds.
Thank you, and I will now ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval 5 to 0.
Thank you. With that, are we losing Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Yes, and thank you very much, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. And I'm on the subcommittee that already looked at the CBDG program, so staff will inform you of my thoughts. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, and congratulations again, Dennis.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item is to discuss, or conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution number 22-2025, approving the community development block grant programs and projects for the 49th program year, July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. And I will now defer to our administrative analyst, John Trichler, for staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Lopez and honorable council members. This evening, staff is presenting for consideration for consideration the city's use of allotted community development block grant funds for the upcoming 2023-2024 fiscal year. Each year, the community development block grant funds are allocated to cities by the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department, known as HUD, and administered through the Los Angeles County Development Authority, the LA CDA. Funding for the Los Angeles Urban County CDPG program is administered by the number of participating cities, as well as a city's need to provide housing, economic and social service, and community development opportunities that principally benefit seniors and persons of low to moderate income, along with certain public projects for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. During the last budget process, the city council allocated CDBG funds for this past fiscal year towards the Recreation and Event Center Outdoor Accessibility Project that was completed this past summer, in addition to the annual allotment for senior social services classes being offered through the Community Services Department. These classes include various services, such as caregiver support, healthcare and finances, and they are provided by senior concerns. Due to the continued COVID-19 concerns, these services are provided via virtual, excuse me, virtual meetings. The city's estimated annual CDBG allocated funds for the 2023-2024 program year is $68,000, combined with 163, 597 of unallocated funds that the city has, bringing us an available total for $231,597. On September 29th, 2022, staff met with the Community Services Subcommittee to discuss the future goals and projects that were mentioned during the last budget workshop, which included the possibility of enhancing another park similar to what was done to the playground and parking lot at Forest Cove Park. After much discussion, the Subcommittee recommended the following: Continue the ongoing support of the senior social services program at a cost of $10,000, and designate the remaining funds towards enhancing the playground and parkroom restroom accessibility at Chumash Park. The accessibility project at Chumash Park will be added to this current fiscal year, the 2022-23, and the scope of work will consist of the following: Making improvements to the path of travel leaving Medea Valley Drive to the playground area, including the removal of concrete areas surrounding the restrooms; Adding a concrete bib where it's permissible surrounding the playground; and replacing existing benches with ADA compliant ones. The preliminary engineer's cost estimate for Chumash Park Accessibility Project was submitted at approximately $192,683, which was significantly higher than originally anticipated. Construction and concrete costs were identified as the main contributors to this cost estimate. Since this is a preliminary estimate, it should be noted that costs for building materials may continue to rise due to supply demands, so staff will have a better evaluation of costs once the project goes through the bidding process. Included also at the Community Services Subcommittee, the accessibility project at Morrison Park was also discussed, and was prioritized as the next site for consideration once any remaining or future funds become available. Improvements would consist of repairing their parking lot and paths of travel leading to the playground area. Staff is hoping to time this project with the playground renovation project that the Westlake Village Rotary Club is currently raising funds for. Similar to last year, staff is requesting the city council to approve the allotment of $10,000 towards the senior social services program, and designate the remaining funds of $221,597 towards the Chumash Park project. Should city council approve resolution number 22-2025, the next step would be to get final approval from the LA CDA. Following those required approvals, staff anticipates the bidding process to begin in the spring of the 2023 new calendar year. Staff respectfully asks that you conduct a public hearing for consideration on improving resolution number 22-2025, the community development block grant programs and projects for the 49th program year for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, and adding the Chumash Park project to the current fiscal year of 2022-2023. This does conclude my report. Myself and Amy Brink, the Director of Community Services, are available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions on the staff presentation? Questions? No questions? Okay. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. So I will now open the public hearing and defer to our city clerk for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted. I'll now defer to staff for any remote participants.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Thank you. Okay, then I will now close the public hearing, and I will now call on each council member for deliberation. Councilmember Weber, would you like to start us off on this one?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think the report was comprehensive, and these block grants are very important, and I'm glad that we're able to keep getting them and funding these important programs. So I'm fine with this, and I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Anstead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am all for this project. I think this is perfect kind of timing. We've gotten a new restroom at Sumac Park, and I think the renovation of Chumash is a great allocation for these funds. So I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sylvester?
I agree with my fellow council members. I think anytime we can improve our parks, this whole community benefits from it, especially bringing us into the ADA compliance. So I'm very happy to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do serve on the Community Services Subcommittee with Councilmember Buckley Weber, so we have discussed this in that committee, definitely prepared to move forward. I want to say that I'm always, of course, we want to support the seniors, always happy to see that money set aside for our senior social programs. But I also am very happy about the Chumash restroom project, because, you know, that is our most visited park for concerts in the park. We have people from all over the community coming to that park, so to make it more accessible, and in particular, the restroom's all-inclusive, is very important, I think, for our community at large. So with that, I am ready to proceed as well. And I will call for a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation of city council adopting resolution number 22-2025, and please state your name. To make a motion and a second.
Councilman Weber moves approval.
Mayor Protim, Chris Anstead, seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval, four to zero.
Okay, thank you. If it doesn't throw Erica off, we'll just do a really quick, we have to finish the meeting with our 40 facts for 40 years, before we go to council and staff comments. This is the last one. We made it to 40. Special thanks to, yeah, thank you. Special thanks to Romero, and to Erica, and to Amy, and to everyone who helped come up with these wonderful facts. And I think you're going to like the last two. They really tie into what we talked about with Councilmember Weber and some of the history of Agora Hills. So we talked about the first Hanukkah menorah lighting, and so our 40, in fact, number 39 is actually about Agora Hills' first-ever Christmas tree lighting. So the first-ever Christmas tree lighting ceremony occurred on December 19th, 1984, sponsored by the Agora Valley Women's Club, the local Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, and 4-H clubs. They donated decorations to commemorate the event. Choirs from Agora High School and Lindero Canyon Middle School, as well as Oak Park High School, sang Christmas carols after the ceremony. All right. And finally, fact number 40, City Hall 1, 2, and 3. So previous to our current Lady Face headquarters, the Agora Hills City Hall was located across the street at 30101 Agora Road. That was from 1985 through 2001. The original City Hall was comprised of 21 staff members, and thanks to local leaders Louise Rishoff and Councilmember Dennis Weber, the new Civic Center and Library launched in 2001. The facility is on 3.2 acres of land and was designed by Charles Walton. The growth of our City Hall is a reflection of the growth within Agora Hills. And until Fran Pavly was officially sworn in as mayor of Agora Hills, she recalls holding meetings around her kitchen table with fellow council members, and we saw that in the video as well. They hired an interim city manager, city attorney, and administrative assistant. The first official city council meeting was held in the Agora High School auditorium to a standing-room-only crowd. They also held meetings at a location that is now next to El Pollo Loco on Canaan Road. The first official City Hall was a small leased storefront located between a liquor store and a dry cleaner in the Reyes Adobe Plaza. So, okay, so we've all been to this current City Hall. Who has been to either City Hall 1 or 2? Raise your hand. Have you been to any of the other ones? Yeah, yeah. And actually, I've been to number 2 as well. I remember going into that little plaza in there. So those are the 40 facts. Thank you again. Lots of fun to celebrate this year with you all, and, you know, just fun reminiscing about Agora Hills for our 40th. So thank you very much. With that, are there any comments from staff that you'd like to share? Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. Good evening, council members. I want to remind the public we're coming off of a big October month of, a lot of events in October, but we still do have our Holiday Boutique. That's going to happen on Friday and Saturday, December 2nd and 3rd. You can visit the website on the Community Services page and click on Events, and it'll give you all the details. And I do want to take a moment, and I'm going to try not to cry either, an employee who has been here for 27, of Councilmember Weber's 29 years. It is going, I want to thank you. I want to start by thanking you. I think during your speech, you referred to yourself as consistent. I think I like to think of it more as dependable and steady. And I think if any one of you council members have been through us the last month, you know how crazy Community Services can be. We're hustling you around and getting you to places, planning events, need you to be here at this time. I mean, Mayor Lopez has had a really crazy couple of weeks. And so I want to thank you personally, Councilmember Weber, for always dealing with my get over here, get here, move it now, I need you here. You've always done it with a smile on your face. And I think from, on behalf of the Community Services Department, you have always been very supportive of parks and recreation. And I think we all know the harsh reality that when we face harsh budget times, like we did in the early 90s, the first thing that usually goes are recreation programs. And so thank you for your support. I think the employees feel that. I think that I speak on, I know several people behind the dais right now, that we truly have appreciated your support and have enjoyed working with you. And I think the hard thing about being a council member is you make decisions and you follow laws, but you're also carrying the weight of creating some of that heart and soul in the community. And I think that your 29 years on this community, you witnessed tonight, you've created a lot of heart and soul in this community. So on behalf of myself personally, the Department of Community Services, and I'm sure several staff up here, thank you. We are going to miss you, and we do hope that you'll go home and put your feet up and rest. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? Okay, council comments? Councilmember Weber?
I just want to, number one, I just want to, we're not going to be around until December. I just want to wish everybody a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving, number one. And Mayor Lopez, when you showed the last picture of the City Hall being constructed, Dave Adams was the city manager when it was being built, and Ray Taylor was the city manager of Westlake Village when it was being built. And you've been in both, both of these places. And I know I was at a meeting one time when these two men, they were very funny individuals, and they were talking about the construction of each of their city halls. And Ray Taylor asked Dave Adams, how's the log cabin coming? And Dave Adams says, fine, how's the mausoleum? It was very funny to be there and seeing these two men tease each other, but they really, the two cities get along, and we have a very wonderful relationship, but these two guys were very funny and good friends. So I just wanted to give a bit of humor. I always like to leave somebody laughing. So thank you so much, and thank you so much for all the recognition and the special feeling you gave me tonight. And that video was very special. Thank you all for that. It means a lot to me.
Thank you. Okay, any other council comments? Council, Mayor Protim Anstead?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually wanted to make a comment concerning Veterans Day coming up, and I want to thank all the veterans for serving this country. And plenty of people gave their ultimate sacrifice to the country. But we remember both active veterans and those that gave their lives this Veterans Day. And again, I want to wish everybody also a happy Thanksgiving as well, and nice to see the pictures up there. Also, this last week, it was nice, the event that we had with the Brownies and Girl Scouts, got a chance to meet many of them and enjoy a meal with them as well. And again, that was for Veterans Day, and look forward to many more events like that going forward for Veterans Day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments, council member?
Yes, I'd just like to say I started my Thanksgiving today with a delicious Thanksgiving lunch up at our center with the seniors. We had a lovely time. We had lots of fun playing games, and we had Frank Sinatra singing to us, which we enjoyed. And I just want to say again what a magnificent staff we had. They were all there serving food, spraying lovely whipped cream on the pumpkin pies. And everybody got a little gift bag to take home. They really enjoyed themselves. And I thoroughly enjoyed meeting all our community residents. So thank you so much again for that. And I attended my first Taste of Conejo on Sunday. So that was fun, too. And happy Thanksgiving, everybody. And finally, I would just like to congratulate certain people who will be returning. So, well done. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the Community Services Department for a killer October. I mean, I can't believe how much we all together got done from Reyes Adobe days and our 40th anniversary, and reading with the mayor, and our One City One book. I just went on and on. We never, never took a break. And, you know, like you said, you're shuttling, you're pushing us here and there, but you do it with such skill. And it's truly, it makes us look good, it makes the community feel good. And I know it was more than usual, but I just want to say thank you, because I've gotten so much lovely feedback from all of that. And, I mean, State of the City, I could go on and on. But it was an incredible month, and I just want to thank you for that, for all that effort. I also want to say thank you to the residents of Agora Hills for the election day results yesterday. We're feeling very good. It's not going to be totally confirmed until December, but be very nice to see Jeremy Wolfe up here at the next meeting, you know, assuming that the numbers stay solid and we get our results by, what is it, the first week of December. So it's looking good for that, and it'll be great to welcome him here going forward. So with that, call for an adjournment. The next regular city council, oh, the regular city council meeting of November 23rd, 2022 has been canceled, and the next regular city council, an official reorganization meeting, is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Wednesday, December 14th, at the Event Center, located at 29900 Lady Ladyface Court in Agora Hills. It is anticipated that members of the public will have the opportunity to participate in person. At this time, we will adjourn tonight's meeting, and will the maker of the motion and second to adjourn, please state your names.
Councilmember Sylvester will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Councilman Weber, seconds, for the last time.
All right, and I'll defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval, four to zero.
The meeting is now adjourned.